In order to rise, please rise for the flag.
I.
You okay?
Yeah, that little piece of down and sprung up and. Golly.
Does anybody want to excuse?
I'll go to excuse board member Chris Deli.
I'll second.
Has been moved and seconded to excuse board member Chris Deli. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, approval of board meeting minutes for May fourteenth twenty twenty five. Do we have any?
Motion. For the approval of board meeting minutes from May fourteenth twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
Still moving seconded to approve the board meeting minutes for May fourteenth twenty twenty five. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Uh, approval of a meeting agenda.
Make a motion to approve the meeting agenda. I'll second.
Is a move and seconded to approve the meeting agenda. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to remove under the consent agenda, under resignations. There's been a resignation, rescension.
So you uh, you want to make an amendment?
Yes, I'll move to amend. The personnel resignations, removing. Corevols.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Has been moved and seconded to amend the consent agenda to remove corevols from the resignations. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Um, back to approval of the meeting agenda as amended. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries meeting agenda. All right, consent agenda. As amended.
I'll move for the approval of the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Still moving and seconding. To approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So, right. Travel requests.
That's under consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, booster fundraiser approval, but I've seen none. Discussion items, student advisory committees.
All right. Slideshow. Do this out of the bird. They share my screen first. Okay, we have been working with a student advisory on, as part of our executive functioning, kind of building up the student, the leadership of their building through. The students have put themselves and kind of identified their three, their growth areas. And their, their focus areas. And today I wanted to have our board give an update. Our goal is, is that um, as we move forward with board reps, our student board reps are now going to have an opportunity to review board policies. To begin making the student goals for their building and their school happen. So with that, and I told them it did not have to be long and complicated. Because it was enough, it was my promise. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Meredith Smith.
Um, it's best to stand over here.
Sure.
So again, my name is Meredith Smith. This is Natalie and Cole. Um, and first off, I want to give a quick update about our shirts because then we talked to you last, it went like quite off the ground yet. Um, but we have all fifteen thousand dollars, which is very exciting. And um, we're super excited about that. Um, we're still kind of working with D four on a shirt design. She hasn't gotten back to me yet. But we've been able to send out um, the shirt size link, like Google form to the middle school and high school. And we're working with PTA to use the fan run sizes as well. And then working with Mr. Smith on the staff send out as well. And we'll get that sent out to staff within a week. Um, and then pretty much from there, once we have the sizes, we'll get the final quote. We really are thinking it'll still stay under um, fifteen thousand though. Um, and yeah, after that, we'll kind of just take off and we should, um, we want them. We gave them the, an August first date, but I definitely think it'll be here before then. And we should have them ready to go for the first of the year, along with all of our other activities. Um, and currently our Eagle Pride group is working on our move up assembly. And that'll be something that we bring back and we're super excited about. And just another thing to build up our Eagle Pride and community within our school. Um, with that, we will move along to our um, site update. So um, one of our groups was not able to be here tonight and we aren't. We were, none of us were in that group. Um, but I know that they're working on some projects with our staff a little bit. Um, but yeah, I'll leave that to Natalie to talk about.
Yeah, so this Eagle Pride committee is different than the people that talked last time. That just, just an FYI. Um, we have like a spirit.
That's like, that's like hashtag bring back Eagle Pride, I think. And then this is just Eagle Pride.
Yeah. The one that we brought in is actually a separate committee that's nothing connected to necessarily leadership or anything. It's actually just a group of students within a committee that meets outside of class time. Um, and we're putting together some different stuff. This is for the student um, council group.
Yeah. And so basically our plans, like what we've been like working about. I guess is a groundbreaking ceremony for the stadium and a ribbon cutting ceremony. And then Carnival Stars BBQ, that's kind of intertwined with the ribbon cutting almost. And so our purpose is reinstilling Eagle Pride in our community. That's basically our focus. And um, we want to do this by holding more fun events and stuff, which would kind of get the community and everyone excited about full spirit and stuff. So, um.
Yeah, do we have a clicker? I just realized.
Okay, so basically.
Just tell me slide and I'll get it.
Okay. So this is for the idea for a groundbreaking ceremony. So we kind of want to celebrate the new building of our um, stadium. And so basically those are just random bullet pointed kind of ideas, but we kind of want to have like shovels there and stuff to like break the ground or whatever. Because obviously no one's actually going to be doing anything, but maybe like digging a hole. Just for like fun, like a picture and stuff. And then yeah, pictures with like pretending or whatever, you know? And then our current mascot, because we want to get a new mascot for next year. And so this would kind of be like the last appearance of our current mascot. Um, and then like we want to sign something. So like, you're like a part of it if you were there, basically. So like we could sign like a post that's going to be part of the stadium. Or maybe we could sign like, I don't know, we had a bunch of different ideas, but basically something like that. So you're like connected to it. And it's like cute and stuff. And um, yeah. Slide. So we're getting there. Um. Yeah, so then we would celebrate that our stadium is actually there. And we'd cut the ribbon and it'd be epic. And we'd all get to go inside and we'd have our new mascot hopefully. And we, I'm not really sure if this would be during school or after school, kind of may, hopefully before a first game. Um, and uh, it would be open to the whole entire community. And it should be kind of like a fun thing. We want to kind of start maybe like a barbecue tradition almost for like games and stuff with our new stadium and just kind of have that connected. So yeah. I just think that'd be exciting.
Uh, I'm representing the kindness group and our main idea was to bring eagle feathers into all three schools. I know that we did it when I was in elementary school. I'm not sure if it's still going on there. But we want to bring it to the middle school and the high school. The whole overall goal is just to make sure our students are being more kind. It's just a better feeling inside the school. So like teachers can just give out an eagle feather when they see somebody doing something kind, helping a student and all of that. And then, once you get some eagle feathers, you can turn it into a teacher or administrator and get some sort of prize. Like, and as you get more, the prizes get better, is hopefully the main goal.
Um, and to add on to that a little bit, we're cool moves on. Um, for the actual like prizes, I know that there has been some talk within our group. So whether or not like, I know Mr. Nessman, you mentioned something about maybe adding like privileges to the prizes and like as maybe as board members, like what do you think, what kind of best, at least for, because I think the elementary school looks a little bit different. But I think the middle school and high school, they're kind of at a stage where they don't want just some random like little junky toy or something. But um, there may be, yeah. And so as board members, is there anything that you're like, oh, I can really think of this, it would be something that would be appropriate for the students to have and like accessible. Um. But I don't know if there's anything else that we're seeing.
That as high school students, they're not quite yet, and some are adults. So it was pretty consistent with our summer reading on how can not quite yet with some of them actually being adults earn privileges for that level of I'm now an adult treatment. So what are some privileges that can open up the doors for more opportunities? Those are my words, not theirs.
I think that definitely gives us something to think about. We'll have to have a little bit of time to kind of mull over a few ideas. But yeah, that's a great idea.
That is the point of a student board rep. How the student board rep is to look at those policies and have those meaningful conversations.
Um, and also something to consider too, is kind of like where we're going to pull the money to actually get maybe if it is something that we're buying for students, like you know, whether or not like at the high school level, ASB can support. But at the middle school level, ASB can't really, really functionally support this because it would be, you know, depending on how we do it. But even if after ten eagle feathers, everybody gets a prize, that's still something to consider. Um, and so also maybe thinking about if we could pull this out of the district budget, like that's something that us as students doesn't, we don't really know exactly where that would come from. Um, or like the best option for that to come from. Yeah.
And we also to incorporate more assemblies. High school students come to the elementary and old schools to help lead assemblies. Uh, party, partnering with make your day assemblies or possibly once a quarter. Working with these students to show kindness and bring an eagle pride, just overall add to the eagle pride, add to the kindness in the school, improve the environment.
Yeah, and we're just thinking that like with these, like we don't really get to, the high schoolers don't get to come and work with the middle school or elementary school students very often. And like as we're talking about our kindness committee, we were thinking, okay, sometimes it just gets tough. Sometimes things, students say things or whatever, because that's what they hear at home. So looking at um, the younger levels and trying to find a build the kindness up so that like we can create a better community within our school and just ultimately making a better environment for our students. And so bringing in high school leadership or these students from the site council, bringing in these students to um, possibly do some assemblies throughout the school year. So just work with our students a little bit more.
About uh, two weeks ago, you said something, not the last meeting, but the one before last. Which was a lot of our lack of kindness is is because that's what our students know, because that's what they'll see at home. Um, but and we've talked a lot about how we might not be seeing the level of kindness we would like to see. But have we taken the time to show the kindness we would like to see, teach the kindness we'd like to see? And I thought the students were really smart on thinking, what does it look like to go show the kindness we would like to see at the elementary school and the middle school and to have the consistency to really show what the kindness we want to look like. And then you said something else that I really liked is is um, you okay if I talk about some of the things you discussed? Um, was one of the things you discussed that I really liked was um, when you come across a lack of kindness, like when the kindness isn't there. And students don't know what to say or how to address it or redirect, that they don't have the field, that they have the tools. And also teaching students that not just how to be kind, but also what to do in the absence of kindness. Or when we don't see the kindness we want to see being held. And I thought that was really, really insightful on, are we thinking about teaching the behaviors or thinking that we're teaching how we want students to treat each other?
Um, yeah, so along with that, just, you know, these are ultimately for our kindness group specifically, just we came up with these activities to just kind of help bring in, bring in some more kindness within our school a little bit. Um, and definitely all of these things, you know, we're still kind of getting started and we still, there's still for sure some more planning to do within all of these different groups, but.
What do you think incentive wise would be a good incentive? Right? Like you were talking about an incentive, not necessarily a prize or whatever, but extra privileges. What would be a good extra privilege?
I mean, no, it's kind of.
No wrong answer.
Okay, but I mean, I always love some extra credit, like options like that. But I know that that's definitely teacher preference. So that gets food.
Food, I guess, I was thinking.
Time.
Food, recess time, field, you know, there's all kinds of stuff in there. I know you guys said uh, an opportunity to have lunch off campus would be a privilege to have if you got so much points, which wasn't a bad idea. So. I thought that was pretty cool. Idea at least. I really like the signing the the steel member.
Yeah.
Yeah. So as you know, whatever's going to go into there, there's a bunch of signatures on it. That's pretty cool.
I was thinking if there'd be some cool way to um, like encase it, you know.
Ms. Elliott had a good idea of like cards, like sign your name on a card. And then she said bury it all under, but we could also maybe like.
Oh, do a time capsule type thing.
Yeah, but like if we could like encase it in the stadium and like all the cards everyone signed and stuff, that'd be a really good idea too.
They might be able to do engraved, sending it, you know, like scratch it on a engraved thing and then you can put it up there and if they had to repaint, then you could put them back up. I don't know. I'm just.
Yeah, I think it'd be a, well, I, I love the concept of it. And.
Yeah. It's very rough draft.
Yeah.
Like honestly, I forgot about money. For both of those things, I forgot money exists, but.
Oh, money is money.
But, but that's uh, in the future.
We asked the students to kind of come together. Michael's been down for a few of our meetings to talk about kind of laying out, this is how schools work. We really want to build a platform. For you to make your own lives, design what you want for your school. And then the students came back and said, hey, we think we know what you're trying to do, but we think we can define it better. And I think that was just absolutely perfect. Because that was the whole point of our work is, how can the students tell us? How can you tell us what you want for your campus? So this is your campus, your school. And how can we help you meet your goals?
Thank you.
And I do think the student ownership on how they've taken over the project is really starting to match what we had in mind. Because that's really what we want. We want to make sure. I think it really does. The onus comes back to us. And I think these are what I wanted. We only have two board meetings left and school's out. And the next board meeting is the last day of school, which is why I wanted to come tonight. Because I was like, there's no way, there's no way you don't want to come on the last day of school. Um, but I felt like it was good for people to know what the students want for their school. Because the best way to show, respect you is to have a plan when we come back on how we can work together to start making some plans work or how to start pulling things together and how we can support you. So.
Did you want to expand on the other group? I know you don't probably want to steal their thunder, but maybe just.
I know the other group is really nervous. The other group wants to run the staff PD day. I know they're really nervous thinking they need the staff PD day planned. They don't need the staff PD day planned, but I'll go down and take a visit soon. They have one of these summer institute days to be working on the cell day, the social emotional learning day. The students identified three areas where they want to have teachers focus on building personal relationships with students to getting to know students. And to have those kind of dual um, two-way conversation exchanges where they get to understand how the students are, you know, how the students feel, what the student ideas are. Um, and, and really build a two-way conversation in classrooms. So the students have ideas on what they want their learning outcome to be. And they're going to have one of the summer institute days to build activities around those activity, those, those learning outcomes.
I just want to comment that I, I appreciate you guys showing up and wanting to ignite a kindness movement. And, and I'm sure that you're all very aware that it takes living that message to be that example. And so I, I appreciate that you're willing to step up and do that and show. You know, there's nothing better than to emulate the behavior you want to see from other people. So kudos to you, because that's a, it's a perfect start.
It had an original eagle feather. It brought back memories and also showed how old that eagle feather is.
I think, um, I appreciate though, that you guys are putting it in the context of uh, kindness. Really out of the context of something you feel proud to be part of is really, really hard. It's just like you're pushing something uphill. And I think when you are part of something that you feel a sense of belonging and and just proud to be part of, and I think that's the physical space, the emotional space, you know, all, all of it. Um. It, it becomes much easier to, to turn. And I think you guys are being really wise to actually work hard to build both of those things simultaneously. Um, because I do think they will feed each other well. Um. And you know, my note that I just wrote down is I'm impressed um, with not just, but there's a number of students that this is a student generated that you're choosing to recognize the power of your influence. Because we, we can have huge aspirations for what we want the school community to look like. The staff and administrators can, but ultimately really the students. I mean, you need both. You need staff and administrators that are going to be behind you and supportive of it. And that they're just as excited and pumped up about the fight song as you all are. I mean, it has to kind of be both. But um, when you as students are also choosing, we're going to use our influence to, you know, really be a, 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 an active voice, not just a kind of passive, but you're actively taking steps. I think it's a huge ingredient that I think we've maybe it felt like we've not had in places. Kids desperate enough for it. And I think you guys are, are communicating that you guys, I mean, you're and your, your money where your mouth is. So kudos to not just you three, but who you represent.
Excited.
I love Natalie's. It's going to be epic. And I think that that is a great feeling to embrace is choosing to see things be epic, because you really do have that ability.
Yeah, like, yeah. Yeah, we had an assembly and the eagle came out and it was epic like, but my thing that I called it was like epic eagle entrance. And then it was epic.
And it was a really cool matchup.
Yeah.
We made a screeching eagle sound with uh, what was it? Highway to Hell or something?
Yeah.
And I just feel like eagle noises at the beginning and they slowly got louder. And then the eagle came out.
That's epic.
And then everyone was hyped and it was epic. I think they were more hyped than they ever been in their lives. Yeah. Well, so they're, they're, they're going to be hyped for this stuff. And they're going to feel the pride.
Love it. I love it.
Yeah.
If you're favored, you might stand by the TV so I get a photo of your presentation.
Yeah, that's a really bad picture. Well. Yeah.
Our plan.
I like that one.
Are they like pretending like we're talking or just?
No, no, I'm just really pumped. Um, I'm really, really, really proud of how.
How epic you all are.
My, my.
An overused epic tonight.
My goal was that you had something you were really excited for. And now it means the work is now back on us to make sure that we can help make your visions happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we good to leave?
Yeah, you don't need to stay. Yes.
We could go home and make an epic dinner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, epic is off the table for it. All right. Uh, audit exit interview, review epic, epic, epic audit exit review, please.
I'm not going to go all the way through this. You guys got your reports in your thing. Um, just so they, it's out there. We did a three-year audit, um. Accountability audit. We did a financial statement for the twenty-three, twenty-four and our federal program audit. We came through very good on all of them. We had no findings. We did get one um, management letter on our gas cards, which we are correcting now. And we should be good to go for the next time you look at. But other than that, everybody did great. I'm proud of the financial secretaries. Had everything in mind. Candace, she always does a great job. So really good stat. They did good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work.
Thanks for being epic.
All right. Is there any public comment? No, no. Yep. All right, unfinished business. Approval to adopt policy sixty-two seventeen, electronic funds transfer second and final reading. I'm going to have a hard time not saying epic after everything that I've heard.
I'll move the approval to adopt policy sixty-two seventy, sixty-two seventeen, electronic funds transfer second and we.
I'll second.
Let's move a seconded approve policy sixty-two seventeen, electronic funds transfer second and final reading. There any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, new business. None, so reports.
We have our moment report, Patrick Bitter's slide in May. The generally the still holding group to our averages at the end of the year. So um, about sixteen thirty-two grand total, or FTE TK is holding out. So that's pretty good.
Slide mostly in secondary or.
Slide most, yeah. And this is very common to have a slide in secondary at this time.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? All right. Back to an epic budget report.
Right now our unbalanced is about six point six million. You will see that drop significantly. We had our end of the year spending going on. Um, so end of May, end of June, we're going to see some decline. I still believe that will end right between five point three and five point five. For our unbalanced. Any questions on the reports?
Please, Danny. Stay in the course. Anybody have any questions?
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, facilities reports.
You know, I said, I said you guys have deferred maintenance. When I was just reading through it, it looks like I have a few people here that put non-matching numbers because I I got updated. I got some price quotes like for the day of me updating this. So I apologize for that. Um. The the stuff from Lakeside came back cheaper than we initially believed. So it would be quite a bit of paving done.
I was really surprised at the number. Like when I saw that, I actually was like, they're missing a zero.
I don't think that, it's like if we add drainage and stuff like that. Yeah, so you know, so we would have to figure some for that.
Yeah, but that's exciting that that portion is much lower, meaning that we could do quite a, I mean, potentially we could do um, a lot more drainage stuff.
Right. Um, other stuff that I didn't quite add on here yet was like, um, just some of the graffiti repairs we'll be doing as soon as the kids get out like, get out, let us fix it. Uh, can we have some fun in the bathrooms? Thank you TikTok and whoever promotes kids destroying things.
Oh, geez.
So we might keep doing some stall partitions, toilets, et cetera. Just.
Some upgrades, yeah.
Not just.
Just to, oh, just made better maintenance, yeah.
Um. Other than that, uh, we have our normal summer stuff we do. I am going to need a wax dripping machine for the high school. And I'm working with Lisa on that. Other than that. I don't know, it's, uh, let's see the, we're pretty close on the permits for the stadium. There's some back and forth with the city and they're working diligently on that. It should be, it's simply a permit. We'll let you know. See with that. Um, and then the the entry ramp is a separate permit because the projects have been separated out. They're focusing on the stadium first. And that should come shortly thereafter. Um. The roofing project at the middle school, we're going to get harbor architects involved just because of the price tag of the project. We have to make sure it's done right.
Yeah.
Uh, so I got them on board for that. I already had uh, another roofer come out. He cut a core, so we kind of know what we're dealing with. Um, so that should get uh, get moving pretty soon. And they'll walk us through the bid process so we don't need anything wrong. I really bad.
And we're hopeful that it all happens.
Yeah.
Summer time.
Uh, the roof.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's, and they don't think there's anything wrong with that. So.
I do see a repair. Um, replacement, I should say, I, on my way here, watched a near miss accident at the high school. Our do not enter sign for people coming through from outside.
Right.
Uh, schools. I mean, literally. I mean, this way. And there was backup because they're all coming for the track. You can't even tell what it says. We all know.
Right.
It's white. The red white sign is white. I mean, that's.
It is, that must be our sign.
It's on our, I think it's on our side.
They had a bus do it for soccer this year.
Yeah.
It's a team that doesn't typically come down here. It was like one of the Olympia schools, and they went in the wrong way, and I was like, how did they make the corner?
I think that that's a fabulous idea.
Because you don't really see it until you turn.
You do not see it.
But I, yeah, maybe some exit entrance.
Yeah.
And it's confused.
It, it is, but watching that, I was like, oh, well, that almost involves four cars.
If, if we can get a project going, that wouldn't be a bad.
This city has an extra.
Yeah.
We do have the, did you give you the quote for the yes?
Yeah, yeah.
It actually came in, I wonder if it's because we don't have to do as much tear out, because when we did our pricing over here, it was ten times that price.
Yeah, I don't know, that's crazy.
I saw that price, I was like, oh, well, that's dramatically less than what I got.
And he was looking at like the parent track offline, and he's like, oh, it's pretty well, you can pretty well just pay right over top of that. Because it's got a pretty good foundation with the ground. Of course, he saw it right after I had drug it, you know, not too, it gets.
Yeah.
Problem pretty quick.
Yeah, for sure.
That'd be a little work, but he's probably thinking they don't have to come in and re-rock everything and.
Right.
Right.
Do a bunch of work, it's just finishing it up, make sure it's got grade and, you know, it's going to drain and stuff.
It saves a lot of traffic.
Yep, so, um, so yeah, there's, it's going to be real busy here this next couple of weeks. And then hopefully all these projects kind of kick off and they'll be caution tape everywhere and it'll be a good summer, so.
That's good stuff.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It is good stuff. Thanks for the report, appreciate it. That is epic, I should have started the epic facilities report. Then, okay, all right, now it's on to us, good in the order. Let's go first, you want to go first, Chris?
We had some great performances, we took fourth in softball, took third in, um, we took third in, uh, state golf. And tomorrow will be the departure for our track team as they go to state. So, and I think the big one is, is we will not have another board meeting until after our graduation. So we will all be together at graduation on, um, June seventh. So I'm really excited to see our seniors. Great way to move on, so.
Can somebody tell me how we're at the end of the year already?
Well, they had senior walk today.
They did have senior walk today.
That went well.
Good. Good day for it.
Yes. I loved hearing the daycare kids get off the bus today, because they saw Miss Kinsey and, and Miss Miley. And you know, that they're, they're the seniors that we have on staff. Um, and they were like, ah, in their minds, they saw stars, you know, like big, famous people in their graduation stuff. And so it's cool to see that the, what you hope it does do is inspire them, you know, about graduation, so. For sure.
To go to school and finish.
I don't have anything else, I'm in, I'm in senior frame mode, so don't ask me anything.
Um, yeah, great sports season, that, that's, that's for sure, with all the accolades we pull them in, that's, that's pretty, pretty impressive. I think what it really shows the kids is it's possible. Um, uh, across the league, actually, Evergreen One A and Trico, the Southwest Washington League has dominated.
The West Side has.
It has really been doing really well. So I think hopefully it inspires all those kids that we can break out and do that, because I think a lot of times you don't, you just don't think that we can. So I'm glad to see that we're doing well. Uh, it was really fun, uh, last few times being a part of the advisory meeting, sitting in. So that, that was fun for me. And then this Friday, we have some learning walks for a few of us at the elementary school, which should be pretty exciting.
That's right, I think Mr. Spruggen says he's got all but two, so he needs two more students, then we'll be all set up.
So minus me.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
So.
Uh, we're going, uh, eight-ish until what time Friday?
I think eleven, like at lunch, when they go to lunch.
Okay, about eleven.
If I have lunch at the elementary school, if you want to.
I just might.
Yeah.
Okay, about eleven thirty. Okay.
Anybody have anything else? All right, with that, we're going to go into executive session for forty-five minutes to review the performance of public employee, uh, no action to be taken. Uh, forty-five minutes from now is what time, I'm not even looking at the clock, that one.
I think that one's right.
Seven.
Seven twenty, all right, we'll be out at seven twenty.
You've signed in. You might have a mystic round.
I am not.
We're going to extend executive session for ten minutes, we'll come out at seven thirty.
All right, we're back.
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
A second.
So moving second and two adjourn the meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed saying nay. Motion carries, media adjourned.